Dr. Berlin.
Dr. Berlin, yes. Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
So moved.
At this time, I call to order this meeting of the Albemarle County Public Schools School Board for January 12th, 2023. At this time, would we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, the which stands in our nation's underground, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
As we have a moment of silence, I want to remember Jennifer Wingfield-Johnston, Albemarle High School graduate and the clerk of the Albemarle County Public Schools School Board for more than 20 years. Jennifer passed away on December 18th, 2022. My strongest thoughts are for her family and for their well-being. Thank you, Jennifer. At this time, would each school board member please introduce yourself for a microphone check? I am going to begin immediately with our, to my right, with our student representative.
Hello, I'm Sunithi Amrasingha. I am a representative of Community Lab High School.
I'm Ellen Osborne, Scottville Magisterial District.
Graham Page, Samuel Millow District.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Jono Alcaro, at large.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewitt District.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall District.
The board will now begin Agenda Item 2.5, Organization of the Board. The board will start with the election of officers and will start with the election of the school board chair. Do you have a motion from the board to nominate a board member for the office of school board chair?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we elect Katrina Carlson as our school board chair. I have served with Katrina for the past five years and she is always prepared and always very focused on the best interest of the students, which is in fact what we are here to promote. She has been an excellent vice chair and I think she would be an excellent choice for chair.
Thank you, Dr. Acuff. At this time, is there a motion for another candidate for school board chair? We are ready to proceed. Do we have a second for the motion for Ms. Katrina Carlson as a candidate for the office of school board chair?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alcaro. Is there any discussion regarding the candidate for the office of the chair? Being none.
That's where y'all all talk about how wonderful I am. All y'all. No, I can.
So you wanted to discuss yourself, Ms. Carlson?
No, I'm good.
Being none, discussion is concluded. At this time, Christine, please record the vote, beginning with Dr. Berlin.
Dr. Berlin? Yes. Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Lee is absent this evening. Mr. Page?
Yes.
So moved.
Congratulations, Ms. Carlson.
I do have one little thing to say. I'm just curious if we have a historian because I'm wondering if a minority woman has ever been chair of the Albemarle County School Board.
I'm going to research that for you. Your first order as the chair.
I don't know what that's saying, but I, someone called that out when I got elected and I felt, it felt silly at the time, but something about being chair and knowing that there's not been a minority woman in that position, I hope it means something.
But we also be the first majority woman, school board.
By five to two.
Yeah.
So I would repeat, congratulations, Ms. Carlson. At this time, it is my pleasure and my privilege to hand the gavel over to you, board chair for the Albemarle County Public Schools School Board Chair.
Okay. Well, with that, we will proceed to the next office, which is Vice Chair. Do we have a nomination for Vice Chair?
I do. It is my pleasure and honor to nominate Judy Lee for the position of Vice Chair of Albemarle County School Board. Ms. Lee is the managing editor of the University of Virginia Alumni Magazine aptly titled "Virginia." She is a representative of the Rivanna Magisterial District on this board and is beginning her fourth year of service to her constituents and to all families with children in Albemarle County Public Schools. She and her husband have a middle school child in this division. Ms. Lee is an ardent champion of underprivileged students, students of color, and students with special needs. She keeps the school board and the school division focused on the needs of these students. Judy Lee will be a strong vice chair and I am proud to nominate her.
Do we have any other nominations for other vice chair candidates? Hearing none, do we have a second on the motion? A second, seconded by Ellen, Ms. Osborne. Any discussion on the motion?
I would just like to say that Ms. Lee is not here because she does not focus on the interest of our children, but her child, Abbott, is having his theatrical debut tonight and so she was unable to do both, but she's here in spirit.
I think we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin? Yes. Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved.
Awesome. Going to the next item on agenda, Item 2.6 is going to be our 2023 Committee Appointments. And if we open it up, can we pull it up on the screen? So Ms. Lee sent her recommendations or thoughts to us, preferences, but I think we'll just go like in the past where we just talk through and see what we want to assign to who.
Since she's not here, we can put her.
Yes, we're giving her everything that we don't want. No, to defend her interest, does someone have her email pulled up? I think that'd probably be helpful, just to have it, someone speaking kind of on her behalf.
I know she's Communications Discipline, KTEC.
I believe so.
There's one other one.
There's one other one.
So while Mr. Alcaro is pulling that up, we can dive into, we'll skip KTEC while you're getting that email. Oh, you have it up. Okay, so let's start with KTEC. Ms. Osborne would like to stay on that, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Lee would like to stay on it?
Yes.
I finished out the remainder of Dr. Acuff's term. I'm happy to, I'm happy to keep doing it. I really like KTEC, I enjoy doing it, but if someone else really wants to do KTEC, I can step aside. Okay, then I will put myself. And Ms. Thompson, are you writing these down or?
I am, yes, ma'am.
So I will, I will serve another term on the KTEC board. Next up is the Piedmont Regional Education Program. Love that one when I did it. It's a wonderful introduction to special education services and the needs of our students, not just here in Albemarle, but across the region. Currently has Mr. Page with Mr. Alcaro as alternate. Does anybody want to step forward for that?
I'm willing to stay on that if nobody else is going to step forward.
Dr. Berlin, I will say, I did it when I was an intro to the, you're new to the board and it was a good way to get like a crash course in. And it's not especially arduous time commitment, but if you don't want to do it, you don't want to do it.
Mr. Page, if you are okay with that?
Yes, that'd be fine.
I'd love to do that.
And I'll be glad to be the alternate again.
Okay, so we have Dr. Berlin as the appointment and then Mr. Alcaro will remain as the alternate. Next up, the Audit Committee. I've done that one too. I want to do that one again. Okay. So is there anybody else who would like to do that one? Okay, we'll keep Ms. Osborne on that one. Communications Committee. Mr. Oberg is gone and Ms. Lee, I think.
She wanted to continue on that one.
She's got it on here.
Okay, so Ms. Lee will continue on that. Is there anyone else? I would be happy to do that one if other people don't want it. Are you looking at it, Kate?
Uh huh. Oh, it's at the bottom.
Are we all looking at the same thing?
I haven't got one. No, it's okay. I've been on it.
And Kate, honestly, I think probably, well, I don't know. Yeah, I guess just two, two members. Do you want to do it?
I did it with Judy for a while.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that one.
You want to do it? Okay, so it will be Ms. Lee and Mr. Page. Legislative Committee.
I've been on that for several years and I would like to step down.
Okay. I've been on it, I would like to stay on it. Obviously, I can step aside if someone else wants to do it.
I would be interested in doing that if.
Okay. Is anybody else interested? The good thing about the Legislative Committee is although we, you can always go to the legislative conferences and advocacy sessions, even if you're not on the committee, so if anyone's interested, it can be a group effort. So hearing from no one else, Dr. Berlin and myself will remain on that. Ms. Thompson, new school board member orientation wasn't needed last year. It is needed this year. If someone wants to volunteer to go over the material with Dr. Berlin.
Yeah, I think I was the one who was signed up for last year and as soon as we can get those materials, I will definitely do it.
Okay. So Mr. Alcaro will do the new school board member orientation.
I mean, we, we met with Rebecca, but we could, I'd be happy to do it again. It should just be one-on-one though, or it's a meeting.
Or two, two-on-one, that's fine.
And then it's a meeting of three.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
Sorry, I did try.
Next up is the School Board Discipline Committee. Currently serving are myself, Mr. Page, and Ms. Lee with Mr. Alcaro as an alternate. Mr. Page, do you want to continue on that?
Yeah, I'm going to continue on that committee.
Okay, I believe Ms. Lee also, what was hers?
You know, I talked to her about it and she's willing to step aside if somebody would like to do it. And I, and I would like to do it.
Okay, so Mr. Alcaro will be on it, Mr. Page. I, I don't need to do it, I, for another year.
You can leave it for Ms. Lee.
So Ms. Lee, we'll keep it with Ms. Lee. Next up is the Thomas Jefferson Adult and Career Educational Regional Board. Ms. Osborne?
I'd like to continue.
Okay, great. Does anyone else want to step into that one? Liaison to the Accountability Committee for Environmental Sustainability, a recently-founded reporting committee.
Yeah, I've been on that. This, this is the first, well, we just finished the first year. I'd be happy to stay on it unless someone else wanted it.
Mr. Alcaro, how do you feel?
I see my name is on this there. I wasn't aware of that.
I would love to join that with you, Dr. Acuff, because that was one of our projects together.
That was our project.
Yep. So if I could be on it with Dr. Acuff. Albemarle Education Foundation, currently Dr. Acuff and Ms. Osborne. I would like to not do that again.
I would like to stay.
Okay.
And then I would like to, to join in my.
Perfect.
Board position, if that, unless there's someone else.
Ms. Berlin is already on it.
Not as a board member.
Not as a board member, but.
Okay. That sounds great. So then we will have Dr. Acuff remain, we will have Dr. Berlin take Ms. Osborne's spot. Lastly, is the Employee Voice Action Committee, EVAC Committee. This was our meeting confer process. They are beginning their meetings. This one, board members will serve on a rotation, so we'll be putting out a list so you can know when your anticipated meeting times are, but we thought it'd be best if everyone attended.
Ms. Carlson, should there be an alternate for the Discipline Committee?
Yes, because that is definitely necessary. So who would like to serve as alternate for the School Board Discipline Committee?
I'm happy to serve as the alternate.
Okay, great. So Dr. Berlin is the alternate. Ms. Thompson, did you get everything or?
The one I am missing, are we going to assign committee members to PEUP, Public Education Foundation?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
There's also, historically, there's been the Capital Improvements, CIP Committee, which is not continuing in that form, but I, Jono and I have talked about continuing some sort of role.
And I'm very interested in that.
Okay, yeah. So I guess that would just be outside of this list, but we'll put your name, should it, should it be reconstituted, because they got rid of it, so.
Right, but we've been meeting for the past year and a half with Matt, Dr. Hawes, Roslyn Schmidt, and Maya Kumizawa.
So do you want to add it to the list?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the Ad hoc Capital Improvements Committee.
So CIP Committee with Dr. Acuff and Mr. Alcaro. And for the, and for the public, I will say, there are, I reached out to various organizations where I think we have randomly had a board member attend meetings. I didn't hear back from any, but please reach out to me or to the school board if there are meetings that you think a school board member should be attending in some kind of community space.
Like CAC, Special.
Yep. Okay, so that concludes that agenda item. The next agenda item is 2.7, Establishment of Meeting Time, Date, and Place. Yes, I'll do it at the board business. So we've all been given a calendar of potential dates for upcoming school board meetings. I hope you've had a chance to review it. Are there any comments about it? Actually, let's just make a motion for, first, is there a motion to approve this meeting calendar? I move we approve this meeting calendar.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I have one piece of discussion, which is that we have to have a school board retreat sooner rather than later, especially unfortunately with the passing of Jennifer. I feel like we really need to have time to go over procedure, we have new board member procedures and, and how we're going to be moving forward throughout the year. So I would like to see that happen either this month or early next month. And I would like to just get a date now, if we can, and incorporate it in. So in the spirit of just getting stuff done, is there a date in January that works?
Are we talking, are we talking about?
A retreat, like an additional meeting, you know?
Right, like a Saturday morning or an evening, or what are we talking about?
I would be open to a Saturday morning since we have some working professionals. So I propose Saturday, January 28th for a morning retreat.
I can't do that date, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's an equities.
Saturday, Sunday, January 22nd? Just for anyone who doesn't think this is professional, this is what happens in court literally half the time. It's just like, okay, this date, does this date work? What about this date?
How about February 4th?
February 4th.
February 4th.
I can't do that.
Okay. Ms. Berlin, Dr. Berlin, when can you do it?
Can we do a Friday with enough of notice?
Yeah, yes.
How about February?
Third?
Third?
Yes.
Okay. If we can't have everyone, we can't, but I feel like we just need to get something scheduled. It proved elusive last time. So February 30th, if we could add that in as a retreat date.
Okay.
And what time?
Do you want to work together on that?
What?
You want to work together on that or you were saying?
Okay.
Dr. Acuff?
If we decide on a time, what time would be suitable?
Let's say 9:00 AM for now and we can adjust when we give notice of the meeting. I just wanted to have it on the, the date.
It's kind of early.
Do you want to?
About 10:00.
10:00, let's do 10:00. So we've had a discussion, we've changed it. I don't think we need a new motion. Do we have a vote?
For the calendar?
Mm-hmm.
Let's vote?
Yep.
I apologize, Chair Carlson, I didn't get the motion first or second. You made those motions.
Second.
Motion to approve the calendar was, was Ms. Osborne.
And should we say with the addition of February 3rd?
10:00 AM for the retreat. Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved.
And this is just not something I've encountered before, so Ross, you might need to chime in. We usually appoint our clerk, our school board clerk at the beginning of the year. We do not currently have an appointment because we're using an interim. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. How would you think we should move forward on that?
You can appoint Christine Thompson as the interim school board clerk at this time.
Okay. So do we have a motion for school board clerk appointment?
I move that we appoint Christine Thompson as the interim school board clerk.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on that? Ms. Thompson, thank you for being willing to step into that role. I know it's rough. Can we get a vote on that?
Dr. Acuff? Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page? Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
So that concludes the opening activities. Next up is approval of our agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'm just going to make, I'm already, I'm already going off script. I'm just going to make an executive decision because I know Ms. Thompson is, is feeling it and I feel like I was going to take a moment later to say it on behalf of the school board. I had a little statement to read about Ms. Johnson and her unfortunate passing. So I think I'm just going to say it now rather than let it die down and then bring it back up again. So as you guys are aware, our clerk passed away over the holiday. It was very unexpected and it was, it was very tragic and we were all heartbroken. So we made a little bio for it. The interesting thing is Jennifer actually really did not like being in public and having her name out there, so I feel a little bit like I'm going against what she would want right now, but I still think it's important that you guys all know that she was a wonderful employee for the county. She actually is local. She graduated from Albemarle High School. Steve Colizar, who sat on our board for many years, said his children actually went to school with her, so she'd been here her whole life. She went, she did leave shortly to go attend Virginia Tech and she began working on the Albemarle County School Board as a deputy clerk in the early 2000s. And she served as board clerk for more than 20 years. She was an integral part of this organization. She's what made us all work and she is sorely, sorely missed. The other thing I'll say is that outside of her work, although she was a very dedicated and wonderful employee, she was all about her family. She took a lot of joy from her family. She was a mother, daughter, wife.
Grandmother.
Grandmother. And during the pandemic, she actually would watch her grandchild Peyton at her, at her home and she would very, she would talk to us about that. And she was just such a caring and wonderful woman. I can tell you that when I went to get my COVID vaccine, for some reason, I thought I would be able to just like run into this building and they would give me the shot and I would run out. And I'd had my kids with me, we were in the parking lot and I was like, I know this is terrible and I'm telling the whole world right now, but I was like, you guys just sit in the car real quick, I'm going to just run in and get this shot, because I didn't have babysitter. I was like, I'll do it. And then as soon as you get through the door, there's like this, the police officers and they were like, oh no, you're like in it now, you're stuck and you're going to have to wait after you get your shot. Jennifer happened to be sitting in the car next to my car and she called me and she was like, Katrina, I don't think you know what you're walking into. I'm going to sit with your children, you go get that shot and I will watch your children until you're done. And she waited outside of my car for an hour with my children so that I can get my shot. And that's just the type of person she was. So she survived by her husband, William Johnson, worked for many years with the police department. She has four beautiful children, Megan, Brandon, Haley, Carson, and then her grandchild that we mentioned, Peyton. We just wanted to take time to recognize her and say she is going to be missed. She was a wonderful person. And I wanted to do that now. Are there any other comments? Okay. Onto Agenda Item 4.0, which is approval of our consent.
We didn't, we didn't vote on the approval.
Sorry. Do we have a vote on the approval of the agenda?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Alcaro?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin? Yes. Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved.
Next up will be Agenda Item 4.0, which is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A second from Mr. Page. Do we have any discussion? I would like to pull 4.3. So do we have, I guess then, an amended motion, a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 4.3?
I move we approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item 4.3, Program Evaluation of Center One.
Do we have a second? Discussion on that? Can we have a vote, Ms. Thompson?
Dr. Berlin? Yes. Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. The next item is 5.0, which is items pulled from the consent agenda. I pulled the program evaluation. Ms. Gelner, I think you were the staff liaison. I think where I had a question on this, I appreciate that we're moving things into the consent agenda just so we can have more program evaluations, but I wanted. but I wanted, I had a question, and I guess I wanted a little attention brought to the student demographics of Center 1, just because that was an area that we had expressed a lot of concern on in the past.
Okay. I can prepare something and send it to the board. I don't have it in this.
So I see an infographic on here. I just, it's, it was a little hard to read, and I guess I would like a follow-up on how it's comparing to our general student demographics and if we're meeting our targets on that, because there was a sentence, there was a little portion in the beginning where I was worried that we're not. If that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next up will be Item 6.0, public comment.
Don't we have?
Spotlight, spotlight. Thank you. It's not listed. We were worried that our spotlight attendees were going to be late, so we had put them in a different portion of our agenda, but I believe they are all here now. So let's do it. So while they're getting ready, I would like to take a moment to introduce another new face that we have up here. We have a new student representative, Sanuthi, and can you please pronounce your name for me so I get it fully right?
You pronounced, it's Sanuthi, you pronounced it correctly.
One of the first times. I've been accused of that. Okay, great, awesome. This is our new student rep. She'll be up here for a while, and she's going to be introducing her spotlight on education.
Sorry. This evening's recognition is...
Could you please just pull the mic a little bit closer?
Thank you. This evening's recognition is especially meaningful to me, given the privilege I have to serve as the student representative on our school board. Tonight, we are honoring the concept of student voice as recently practiced at Journey Middle School. Twice each year, all schools in the division conduct a student survey that is anonymous and that provides administrators with feedback on such topics as school climate, safety, cultural awareness, and action, the value of school, and every student's sense of belonging. This input is used to enhance the services and opportunities that are provided to students. It's an important part of one of our values as a school division, to provide every student with the level of support necessary to thrive. At Journey last month, Principal Ashby Johnson took the idea of student voice one step further, bringing together focus groups of students who analyze the data from their peers. Students talked among themselves in groups that focused on each category, such as climate or safety. They discussed what the data revealed about their school, and more important, they proposed actions that address the survey's findings and enhance the school's ability to ensure the success of every student. These ideas were presented to the principal and shared with the school's leadership team. And they will be the basis for future improvements. Here this evening to talk about this approach, which empowered students by not only collecting their opinions, but welcoming their ideas, is Ms. Johnson. With the principal is Mary Catherine Thompson, a school counselor, and four eighth grade students who contributed to the focus group discussions. Yuri Radcliffe, Sophia Ailer, Joey Coleman, and Humberto Gonzalez. I'm sorry if I pronounced your names wrong. Ms. Johnson, we are eager to hear about why you chose this approach. What most impressed or surprised you about the focus groups and how the schools will benefit from the specific recommendation of our students?
Awesome. Thank you. Can you all hear me okay? I'm a little bit short. Okay.
A little bit closer.
A little bit closer. All right.
Have better hearing than him? I was saying it.
Well, thank you. Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Haas. Thank you for having us join tonight. We're super excited to share just what we did with our student focus group. We, and I'm Ashby Johnson, I'm the principal at Journey, so if I haven't met you, hello. We actually took a group of 25 students here. We brought them here to central office, and we had a student focus group discussion back in December. And we had various groups that Ms. Thompson's going to talk about a little bit, just really delve in and analyze our panorama survey data. And we had students come up with different recommendations and different commendations for us of things that we're doing really well at Journey, and then they also shared things that they would like to see us either improve on or just ideas that they had for our school. So, I was super impressed with how seriously the students took this task that I gave them. We had sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, just a very diverse group, who worked on this for several hours down here at central office. And we're just going to share a little bit about what we learned and some of the things that we want to do moving forward. So Ms. Thompson's going to talk a little bit about the groups, the specific groups. And then I've got three students, Yuri, Sophia, and Humberto, who are just going to share a little bit about their specific group and some of the things that their group talked about. And then you all can ask us questions. Hi, good evening. My name's Mary Catherine Thompson. As Ashby said, I am the seventh grade counselor at Journey Middle School this year. This is better. Okay, great. So I had the privilege of being one of the adult facilitators of this student focus group. We had a mix of some other student support staff, like myself, and a teacher representative from each grade level. And what we did is we came here, we talked all together and explained and reminded the students of the survey, what the purpose of the panorama survey was, and then we looked at the data all together. And then we split up into groups, and those groups all consisted of one adult facilitator and about four or five students per group of mixed grade levels, sixth, seventh, and eighth, that were really representative of the school. And so each group delved into a particular area of the survey. So one group would look really at the data and at each individual question for, say, sense of belonging, while another group was simultaneously looking at the data for valuing of school. And so by the end of it, we had really separated off and sort of jigsawed the activity and looked at all of the data, and then we came back together as a group, had one student leader from each group share out their thoughts. And so we used a protocol to look at, what did you notice? What recommendations do you have? In what ways does the data show that we're doing well? And what do you make of that? Why do you think that is? And what ways do we need to grow? And why do you think that is? And so that is what we did. And now, we're turning it to students, right? Okay, so Sophia.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Sophie Ailer. I'm an eighth grader at Journey Middle School. I was in the group Rigorous Expectations, and we just thought we did a really good job in this group. We had a really high average, and it was higher than Alamo County Public Schools' average. Like, we were just thrilled to see that. We just did a really good job. We thought that to improve, it might help for teachers to make real-world connections to what they were teaching in class, to increase their expectations for learning.
My name is Humberto Gonzalez. I'm an eighth grader at Journey Middle School. And my focus group was on school safety. I feel like from the data we seen and got back from the survey, that we have a strong structure of adults that helps students at the school feel safe. One of the ideas we had that would help kids at the school feel safer is maybe that if we had a bulletin board where students can address their ideas and put them up for everyone to see during like one of our advisory periods. And I feel that would just make the school way safer.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Yuri Radcliffe, and I'm an eighth grader at Journey Middle School. My group focuses on sense of belonging based on the data. Journey is doing well with adults, making connections with students and staff, and listening to students. Moving forward, we would like to see more time for, like to see more time for teachers to process with students throughout the day. We also would like to more, would like to work on all more students of being respectful of each other's choices and ideas. And to touch on about Humberto, if, if you feel like you weren't safe at school, I feel like you wouldn't be a sense of belonging to school if you didn't feel like you were safe. So that's what I'm touching on. Thank you.
Here he's way taller than me. What questions do you all have about the work that we did? Either about the actual focus group itself or some of the things we're going to do moving forward. We're happy to answer them.
I guess this would be, for any of the students, did you, how did you enjoy? Did you enjoy the process of talking about these issues with your colleagues? Or what, the focus groups, what did you get out of it? Beyond the conclusions you made. I mean, was it a productive tool for you?
I felt really heard, like, just listened to when I went to the focus group. I felt just that, like, my ideas about all the different groups and all the different things we either struggled or excelled with, I just really felt like my ideas were being heard as well as everyone else's. And hearing similar ideas and even different ideas might have changed my perspective or just helped with how I look at just school as a whole.
Kind of adding on to what Sophie just said, I feel like being able to express your opinion was this great chance I've gotten from this. It really helps. And it just, really just feels like I'm being heard and then, like, the school system is working.
We'd like to hear that, but.
I don't see, basically what they said, I'm going to say, but I just want to touch on. I did it with Ms. Keys. Me and Ms. Keys are really like familiar. And I did it with a sixth grader that I got a tutor too. So I felt like I was just being heard, and then we got to see everybody's perspective of what, like I said, like, teachers and students got to work it out. We see their perspectives of how they got lunch while we're dealing with our problem, but they still want to deal with our problem and stuff. So I feel like we got to see everybody's perspective and see how everybody felt.
Would you like to have more opportunities to have these kinds of focus groups?
Yeah, definitely. It just feels really good. Like, I also feel like a lot more people should be able to have these opportunities too. It just makes people more, I guess, happier. It also boosts their, I guess, mentor-ness, knowing that they're being heard. So I feel like this opportunity for people would be really good.
And did you enjoy, I'm sorry, enjoy your interactions with the younger students? I know you mentioned the sixth graders. I mean, did they participate, or did you eighth graders crowd them out?
They participated too. I just felt like, since, you know, they just came out of elementary and stuff, they just, you know, just, how do I say this? Just came into middle school, so they're just going into the motions and stuff like that. But yeah, I felt like I gave them my ideas and then they got to touch on what I said.
So you got to mentor them?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Johnson, what from this principal perspective did you see as being good about this exercise? And how will you change it or modify it if you think it needs modification next time?
Moving forward, yeah, that's great. I was just super impressed, again, with how serious the students took the task that they got. So they literally had to analyze, I don't know if you all have seen the survey data, but there's the categories, and then there's the individual questions. So they had to analyze that, they had to talk about it, they had to sort of reflect on what they felt like we were doing really well with and what we needed to work on. They also, this group in particular presented to their eighth grade teachers, and so they were able to share some of the ideas about the process and what we did and the suggestions that they had. We had some other groups present to the other teachers and the leadership team. And so the teachers and the staff really got to hear too, also from the students. So it wasn't just the one, that's kind of my next step, is really making sure that the whole school experiences and understands the results and kind of what we want to do moving forward. We are going to have two more focus groups this year that are going to be similar. So they're going to be, it'll be with a different set of students and staff, but I think it's a great way just to get folks involved, get the eighth graders working with the seventh and sixth graders, get different teachers working with different students at different levels. So I think overall, I was just really impressed with how smooth it went and how well it went. And I think it was great the students got to share just some of the things that they're seeing and that they're thinking and that they would like for us to work on.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Ms. Johnson, you might have already mentioned this, but how did you choose the students? The ones that you brought to night are really good representatives, I think, of Journey. But how did you choose the students who participated?
We, I picked students from all different backgrounds. We made sure that we had representation from different ethnic and racial groups, different gender, and different levels of leadership. So we've got students who are very vocal leaders. And then we have some students who are just some quiet leaders, that they're not as vocal, but just wanting to make sure we had a nice mix. So I really just looked through the school and selected 25 students, had the counselors look at it, make sure we had a mixed group. And so it went, it went very well. Actually, the day that we were leaving to come over here on the trip, word started to get out that we were going on a field trip and that we were going to do this focus group. And so I had other students coming up to me saying, well, when am I going to get to be on the focus group? And so that's, that was really exciting to hear. And, you know, we invited 25 students, and all 25 students were there on that day and came and participated, and so it was fantastic.
Thanks.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Johnson and your staff and the students. I thought you did a wonderful job of this. It's really, it's an exemplar for what all schools should do with the data, is work with students to help them interpret it and come up with ideas for improvements, and I commend you for that. I also want to say that next week is Virginia Principal Appreciation Week. Every year, it's usually, there's no advanced announcement about it. The governor does a proclamation on the, I think it's the second or third Monday in January, but I thought just in advance, we could really let Ms. Johnson know just how much we appreciate her, the work that she does. You really are a principal's principal, and we greatly appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you. Thanks.
So, are there any other questions? So I think we, I would say thank you all so much for, no, don't go sit down yet. Thank you all for coming to share the work that you did. I hope you continue to step into roles where you're making your voice heard. I don't know if you know, but in high school, high school students just a few years ago in Alamo Schools passed one of the first anti-racism policies, and I know probably the first in the state, probably one of the first in the nation as well, and that was student-led and driven just by people like you. So thank you for the work that you're doing. And I want to make sure I get your names right. So it's Sophia, Sophie, Marvin. I had a hard time hearing your name.
Yuri Radcliffe.
Okay, and?
And Humberto Gonzalez.
Okay.
And Sophia Ailer. And Joey Coleman was going to join us, but he is actually sick, so he wasn't able to join us.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my hearing's not as good as I thought it was. If you could all come around and shake our hands, and if your parents are there, they can take photos if they want. And if you're not comfortable shaking hands, you can do a fist bump.
Thank you.
If you start over that way and walk around.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Great work. Congratulations, great work. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much for coming.
Did you say you were two of us? Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Good job. So that concludes our spotlight on education. The next agenda item, and that The next agenda item, and that was moving up seven above six, how it's traditionally done. So now we will be moving on to public comment. And I will be handing over the mic to, I believe.
That would be me.
Ms. Osborne.
Yeah. So we have six speakers tonight. The first five will be in person, and then we will have one Zoom person. I will read the comment guidelines first, and then I'll tell you what order you're going in. We invite and actively seek the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. State your name and address or your voting district, your magisterial district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. You can give written statements and other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A commenter will be required to discontinue comments after three minutes. Color-coded light system is used to time the presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is, is two minutes into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit of the presentation and he must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. When multiple comments on the same topic have been presented, the chair may request additional comments on the topic be limited to those who have new information to present. Debate and dialogue with the school board is not allowed. Use of the projection system is reserved for staff scheduled agenda item presentations only. Okay, we will have Ricardo Mateus, Laura Harrison, and Sam Pico first. Then we will have, then we'll hear from Amanda Moxon, Dashad Cooper, and then our friend on Zoom, Brandon Lindsay. So Mr. Mateus, if you're here, you can come on up.
Good evening, members of the school board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ricardo Mateus. I live at 2000 Lock Lane, Charlottesville, Virginia. I come before you today as a parent who is desperate to save his child from a lifetime of medical complications and self-harm. Nearly three years ago, my wife and I adopted our niece, who will remain nameless. She was a wonderful, smart, creative girl, and at the time that we adopted her, her home situation with her biological mother, who was addicted to heroin, was neglectful and unsafe. We took her away from that situation and we loved her with all our hearts. My niece was always comfortable in her identity. Growing up, she enjoyed everything a typical little girl enjoys. After coming to live with us here in Charlottesville, my niece began to be bullied by her new peer group in middle school, and unbeknownst to my wife and me at the time, she also became deeply involved with certain online communities through social media. According to my niece's own recollection, her peers bullied her because by their cruel standards, she was quote, "too ugly to be a girl." As a result of this bullying, and because of the onslaught of disorienting ideas she was receiving from social media, my niece concluded that if she didn't fit into the category of a girl, then she must be something different. My niece's peers, both in school and in the online communities that she joined, pressured her into believing that she was not actually a girl, but rather a transgender boy trapped in a girl's body. Desperate to escape this bullying, my niece gave in to this peer pressure and began learning the language and adopting the ideas of the transgender ideology. In the months that followed, my niece grew distant and emotionally volatile. Shortly after her 12th birthday, she announced to my wife and me that she was in fact a transgender boy, and that she immediately needed hormonal injections to stop the effects of natural puberty from taking place. She also expressed a desire to, as, at the first opportunity, seek medical procedures to remove her breast tissue and undergo sexual reassignment surgery. My wife and I were horrified and heartbroken that our child had been made to believe that she was not worthy of love and friendship as the person that she is. Knowing that my niece was being bullied and skeptical of these sudden changes, I decided to research the trans phenomenon for myself. What I discovered is that countless families all over this country and all over the state are experiencing the same situation that we were. Tens of thousands of teens are currently suffering from what psychologists are calling rapid onset gender dysphoria, which is a condition that results from kids, typically girls in their early teens, from being indoctrinated into the trans ideology through peer pressure and social media. According to a recent survey by the Washington Post, nearly one in six Gen Z teenagers are affected to some degree by this condition. My wife and I decided to take action by separating our niece from the influences that were pushing her to adopt this extreme dispute of herself. We removed her access to social media, separated her from unhealthy relationships, and most importantly, we removed all materials related to the transgender ideology. Two years on, my niece is once again a happy, healthy 14-year-old girl, content with who she is and comfortable in her identity as a girl. The phenomenon that my niece experienced was a systematic grooming by an extremist ideology. Our success in preventing her from falling deeper into this black hole of identity confusion was the removal of all influences that were harmful to my niece's sense of self. One month ago, my niece brought home this book. It's called "They Them," and it is intended to spread the transgender ideology to children. The book is originally from the Alamoah Library, Alamoah High School Library. Books like this, filled with cartoons that are aimed directly at kids, are intended to groom sexualized and corrupt adolescents by instilling in them false ideas about the human body, about human psychology, and the nature of personhood. Please hear me when I say this. Gaslighting children to believing that they had been born into the wrong body is child abuse. Making kids believe that in order to love and accept themselves, they must first surgically remove parts of their healthy bodies and adulterate their hormonal systems with foreign chemicals is child abuse. There is no scientific evidence to support this hypothesis.
Thank you, Mr. Mateus.
Thank you.
Next we have Laura Harrison.
Laura Harrison, Rio District. I'm here tonight to talk about the safety of students in light of a Daily Progress article that came out today. As a therapist and parent, I understand and even share some of these concerns, and I urge us all to not be led by misinformation as a response to fear. As a division, we must address the holistic needs to get to the root issues our students are facing. The following are some examples of what the division should do. One, increase trauma-informed training for staff. Hurt people hurt people. Incidents don't occur in a vacuum. The last several years in a pandemic have left many students suffering from significant trauma. I see it every day. What is really being done to student, to support students' mental health in these schools? Where's the aftercare when young people in our community are involved in shootings? Who on your staff is even equipped to provide this aftercare? Untreated trauma is ignored at the expense of everyone's safety and well-being. Two, your community engagement with the folks who are most negatively impacted by police is abysmal. Make a choice to acknowledge those voices exist, even when you may not hear from them. These are the voices that matter most and must be centered in this discussion. Three, partner with local organizations that address mental health, sexual assault, housing, food justice. Be a bridge between your students and the resources that are available for them in the community. Four, train your administrators and staff in transformative justice. Build a culture of restoration. Boldly refuse to participate in the school-to-prison pipeline. Reject the use of intimidation and punishment. Five, hire more mental health professionals for all your schools. It is irresponsible to consider budgeting funds to pay for cops when schools are woefully lacking expertly trained mental health professionals. Six, allow collective bargaining now. The culture you create in your division starts with the way you treat your most important resources, the teachers and staff. These positions are experiencing burnout like never before, yet you all are doing nothing to support the ones tasked with supporting our students. Finally, I'll remind you that approximately 30 to 40% of cops are domestic abusers. Research also shows us that students of color and disabled students disproportionately receive police intervention. A decision to place cops in schools is a racist and ableist decision, full stop. I urge the board, do not turn back the data-informed decision you all made in 2020. Reject any proposals to bring back even one cop to our schools.
Thank you.
And the comments made before me, if anybody would like to speak to me about what was said, I'm a therapist, and I can clarify some of that misinformation that was said before me.
Next up, we have Sam Pico.
My name is Sam Pico. I'm from the Rio District. Just as a note for anybody who is listening to the meeting, you can be trans and survive into your adulthood. I am a non-binary parent. You can get through it, no matter who your people are. Today, I wanted to come and speak on the matter that was posted in the Daily Progress today regarding the possible return of school resource officers to Alamoah County Public Schools. I have a few questions for the board to consider when being brought this idea. What needs are not being met for our students at present that are causing dysregulation in schools? How is a school resource officer supposed to fill those needs? Because they cannot. The police, their, their job is essentially not to prevent crime. This is proven by multiple studies. I don't have them to cite. I'm certain they are widely available. But it's abundantly clear that their purpose is used to defend property and to carry out or collect people in order to receive punishment. So what service does that provide for our students? A school resource officer will also need a line in the budget from the county. And why is that money not then instead going to be used to meet the needs to resolve the root causes of the dysregulation among our student body? What community are we fostering at our schools? If a school is to be a family, as this is billed to our students in school, what does it say to bring a cop to a family gathering? When police are used to instill fear and to control behavior? Why is the solution for this to be fear tactics, control, and intimidation, and not meeting the needs of our kids? With the knowledge that police, including school resource officers, disproportionately impact people of color, those who are disabled and neurodivergent, trans and non-binary, or gender expansive people, and those who have English as a second language, migrant and immigrant community members, how can we consider school resource officers a solution while upholding the ACPS anti-racism policy? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Amanda Moxon.
Welcome, Dr. Bulin. Great to see you. I wanted to read back to you all your statement from June 2020, just as a way to level-set where we are. "The Alamoah County School Board strongly supports the demonstrations across our country in support of racial justice and equality, as upholding the principles and goals of our anti-racism policy. The actions these demonstrations protest, the unconscionable and abusive treatment of Black and other people of color, have added to our concerns for some time about the value of having SROs in our schools." So that was two years ago, not even 18 months ago. And I want to know what has changed. If anything, the cultures of our schools is the problem. The leadership is the problem. I'm a senior director of HR and organizational development. That is my profession. Anytime there are things happening within an organization, it's always about the leadership. How do we fix that? How do we retweak that mindset so that the right people are being served? The fact that the anti-racism policy is being touted and constantly talked about, it cannot live alongside having SROs in the building. Over the past five years, we've actually been coming to this podium and begging you to please care about our kids and take care of them in a way that's consistent and a way that they can trust. And yet, we still have 90% of our teachers are white. The data's there. I can remember a few years ago, when it was said that every single one of these school board meetings would be highlighted with discussions around equity and where we are. I haven't seen any of that, okay? You have to dig for that data. It's not helpful. Regarding the SROs, I do want to note that there are extra police officers in the back. And you know why, right? Anytime there's a conversation where race is involved, we need to bring police in, in this county. And it's really disturbing. I have two children that are school-aged. Every time I come to one of these meetings, first of all, they're terrified because I have been attacked and brutalized by the same group of people, and they know I'm walking into a dangerous place. So I just want to make you aware that this is what's going on. This is stirring the pot, and what I would like to see is either a statement from the school board confirming that you do align with the anti-racism policy and that you do agree that we are not going to have SROs back in this school. If you continue to not address it and allow Dr. Haas to continue meeting with parents and telling them that this is what's going to happen, then it's going to cause a lot of mistrust from the community. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Dashad Cooper. Did you want to come up and say something, Mr. Cooper?
No, ma'am.
Okay. That was quite cool. Then we have our gentleman on Zoom, Brandon Lindsay. I'll see you on that screen, but not the big screen. Let's see. All right, thank you. You can go ahead. If you're watching the feed, turn it off, because you can go ahead and speak.
Corey, we are ready for you now.
Uh, radio j. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, please.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, please. Can you text him to turn off his IP? Maybe if we put in the chat that we can hear him and...
Yeah, can you hear me? This is the danger if you do virtual comment.
Oh, it's, it's unmuted now. We can, we can hear you.
My name is Brandon Lindsay, and I'm a father of three in Meriwether Lewis Elementary. And I wanted to take a few minutes and share my experience as a committee member of the Meriwether Lewis Elementary Name Evaluation Committee. What I'd like to do tonight is talk to you about that process. And actually, it was not a name evaluation committee, but we quickly learned from Dr. Haas in our first public comment that we were a name change committee. When we talked to the public directly the first time, Dr. Haas laid the groundwork that we were to look at the new, as a new school, as a new school, and how did we change that name? But what will not be included later tonight in that evaluation that is presented to you is that during two different surveys, over 400 people came, over 400 people were surveyed, and 90% of those participants came back and said that they wanted to keep Meriwether Lewis as the name. During the public comment, there were absolutely nobody that had a negative comment about the Meriwether Lewis name, and the only comment that questioned it was what is the process in looking for transparency? During this process as well, no African-American community groups or Indigenous personnel community groups came back and said that they had any issues. It was only an issue when the committee came back with a nine-to-three vote for Meriwether Lewis Elementary. At the time, the committee was then directed to come back for a second vote. And at that time, we did not collaborate or discuss as a committee, but we received a block of retraining and instruction on diversity and anti-racism policy was read to us. And after an hour of that training, then we were told to re-vote. We were not asked to collaborate, but re-vote. The committee was appalled, and several, and committee members did not participate fully at that time because they did not want to be a part of the process any longer. So why do I come to you tonight? I want to, I want to let you know that number one, there are no representatives tonight from Meriwether Lewis Elementary School to talk about the excellent engagement that they conducted... to talk about the excellent engagement that they conducted with the students, nor is there any committee members here to talk about their experience. Two, I now share that lady's perspective from the first comment period. And you have nine members that feel manipulated to achieve a desired end state. Three, if this is how small business is taken care of, I can only imagine how the big business is taken care of without the lack of transparency or the sharing of information to achieve a desired end state. In the end, you're going to receive a smear campaign later on about Meriwether Lewis and talk about his drunkenness, supposedly being court-martialed, a slave owner, and suicide. In the end, regardless of your decision, there is a lack of trust with the committee and the community members in this process with no transparency and an evidence of manipulation. And I'll look forward to spending time with my representative to talk more about this process. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment time.
I'd like to say thank you to everyone who gave public comment. Thank you for taking the time and stepping up and sharing your thoughts. The next, and thank you, Ms. Osborne. The next agenda item, is the beeping from the Zoom? The next agenda item will be School Division Business, Agenda Item 9.1, which is Discussion of the 2023-2024 Calendar.
Did we have anything on 8.0, School Board Superintendent Business?
Yes, yes, sorry, I'm gathering myself. And this is a good time if people are transitioning out. Dr. Haas, do you have any superintendent business?
I did have just a, just a couple of things. First of all, I really want to thank the Woodbrook Elementary School staff and students and families for having Dr. Acuff and me for a visit on Tuesday. We really enjoyed our visit. I know I was really impressed with the business atmosphere, the students working, having fun. A lot of focus on reading, a lot of focus on the fundamentals around phonemes and students building words, math focus, and just the overall climate of the school, very positive and supportive of students. So I want to commend Ms. Williams and her staff. They just do an outstanding job over at Woodbrook, and I want to thank them for having us to visit. I do want to, you know, it was highlighted in the, I guess, in the media today a little bit about my impending recommendation to the board around returning to having a school resource officer or what I would refer to as a Lamb's Lane Community Campus Police Officer. There are other measures we're working on at the school to, to address what's happening. One of the things we, we started out the school year with was banning cell phones in the classrooms. I want to remind the board about that. That was a major issue for teachers, working with kids and kids learning while they were in class. So they could still have cell phones out and about, but a lot of the issues that we talk around, talk about around anxiety, student mental health, stress is caused by the presence of cell phones, especially when they're in a learning environment. We just hired a dean of students whose focus will be to actually pull in services to the school for students that are having the most inappropriate behaviors at school, focusing on restorative practices, restorative justice, working in the realm of behavior intervention so that the students who have difficulties, rather than just simply saying to the student, "You're out, you're done, don't return," we will be, we are working with those students. And the school staff's trying to do it, try to work with these students. But they need someone to come in and specialize in that work. I will say, we've hired Jason Lee, who's well-known to the board and our community. And at one time, he was an assistant principal at Alamo High School, did a great job with families and kids. And he's not going there just as another, you know, just to be another person on staff, but this will be his role, to, to work with behavior intervention with students to make sure that they can stay at school and get what they need. I am also recommending, I started a project a couple of months ago, talking with Rosalyn, about the, the restrooms on the first floor. When I was principal at Alamo, they were an issue. They are what you call, and this I know sounds ironic, they're called gang bathrooms, meaning large bodies of students are meant to go in, use the restroom. I'm, you know, talking with students over time. I realize this is not innovative, it's not flashy to talk about restrooms. We're supposed to talk about all the learning spaces. But if a child doesn't feel like they can have privacy during today, during the day to, to spend time at the base of Maslow's hierarchy of human needs, then I think it's hard for them to learn and hard to pay attention to what they need. So we are using some of our capital dollars that's recurring annually to gut those bathrooms and to install single occupancy restrooms so that you can replace both of the restrooms that are on each. We're also looking at doing it on the second floor as well because they're just the same, bottom, top and bottom. It's just that the, the bottom ones are more of a challenge. And so the goal would be to be able to have single occupancy restrooms to, for, so our students can be more comfortable and meet their needs and have a duty station outside each one. I am also honestly looking into having vape detectors installed because that's another big complaint that we get from our students and from our families is that they don't want to go in the restroom and use it because it's full of, I guess, vapor after students leave. The other thing is that, and this will probably be the last thing I'll touch on, and speaking of restorative practices, we have, we really have a great deal of vandalism in our, in the restrooms that I think contributes to the overall climate, the problems that we have. Having experienced it over the years, you know, spent time renovating a restroom, you go in a couple of days later and someone's knocked the paper towel dispenser off the wall. Or, for example, you heard recently from students saying that menstrual products, we stock them very well in the restrooms, but students will go in and just unload the whole dispenser into a commode and flush it and flood, flood out into the hallway. So what I've talked to Dr. Turner about is that when we have a student who's, has inappropriate behavior at one of our secondary schools, and in addition, so whatever other consequence they have, that they're going to come back during the summer to do some work with custodians and work with the people that we really should be, have a great deal of respect for, for taking care of our facilities and helping to have clean and well-maintained facilities for our students and staff so they can understand the hardships they create when they do this kind of damage. It's not just about money, but it's about morale with our, with our custodial staff. So I wanted to share that. Lots of times, we have a conversation with someone representing the media, they just grab one piece of it. I want you to know, we're doing a lot more. And there's a lot more that has been done at the school to support all of our students, even when they come to school and they're not, they're not safe during the day. Our first goal is to have them have high-quality teaching and learning, recover, and get them back on track. So I just wanted to share that. Those were my, my two pieces. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Haas.
Can I add something unrelated to Alamo High School? You know, over the break, there was quite a few incidents of pipes bursting and things like that in some of our schools. And I know there was an email going around about how well our Building Services Department stepped up and went in on Christmas Day and all of that stuff. But I think a public shout-out for their efforts would be helpful, too. We really appreciate everything they did to get our schools back and ready for coming back after the break. So thanks to them.
Is there any other superintendent business, excuse me, school board business? Hearing none. Thank you for those comments, Dr. Haas and Ms. Osborne. We will move on to School Division Business, Agenda Item 9.1, which is the calendar development for 2023 to 2024. So there is one other little piece of school board business, which is that Ms. Lee just texted to say that her son did great in his play.
Very nice.
It was a murder mystery. Thanks so much to everyone for understanding my absence tonight. I'm so glad I got to see this.
Was he the deceased?
I don't know who he played. Sorry, go on.
It's all right. Good evening. My name is Jamie Gellner, Director of Special Projects, Program Evaluation, and Department Improvement. And tonight's presentation will be about the 2023-24 School Division Calendar Development. This work supports the work in our strategic plan, specifically Goal 1, Thriving Students, and Goal 2, Affirming and Empowering Communities. Objective 1 under Goal 1 states that ACPS will facilitate learning experiences grounded in high expectations, networks of care, and student curiosity to ensure academic and social emotional development for all students while eliminating opportunity, access, and achievement gaps. Key strategies to support this include our Division PLC Days, Professional Learning Community Time, school improvement planning with comprehensive support teams, and collaborative time for teachers to look at data. Goal 2 states that ACPS commits to developing a culturally responsive environment that will respect and champion the diversity of life experiences of all stakeholders and supports the physical and mental health of our students, staff, and families so they are actively empowered to engage in our school community. Key strategies include all staff earning a culturally responsive teaching micro-credential or certification and developing monitoring and using equity dashboards. We believe the time teachers and staff spend on analyzing data and receiving professional learning on the days we've built in will benefit students. Traditionally, we have a joint ACPS Charlottesville City Schools Calendar Committee that meets to draft a common calendar. We met November 10th as a larger team, and following that meeting, we both decided to submit our own drafts to our respective communities. The ACPS team met for a second time on November 21st and drafted two calendar versions to send out to the community for feedback. After the survey was sent, we met for a third time to review the survey results, and we created Draft 3 of the calendar, which is what we'll review tonight. The committee consisted of 12 administrators, teachers, parents, and central office staff members. When the committee met to create drafts, we considered the goals of the strategic plan, which requires continuation of dedication, excuse me, dedicated time for Division PLC work and professional learning and collaboration time. We considered what is best for student learning, and we considered the state requirements that the calendar should be 180 teaching days or 990 instructional hours. During our work, we received an email from several principals asking us to prioritize keeping as many five-day weeks as possible, and so we tried to do that as well in Draft 3. The Draft 1 version has an August 23rd start date and a June 7th end date, which is very similar to this school year. We had three days off for Thanksgiving break and two weeks off for winter break, which is also the same as this school year. We drafted six Division Professional Learning Community slash Professional Learning Days for staff in order to incorporate more professional learning time to meet our strategic plan goals as well as requests from principals. This school year, those DPLC days are actually DPLC slash teacher workdays. Recognizing that the city drafted a calendar with a full week off for Thanksgiving, we did the same in order to get feedback from our community. This version is the same as the first, except that it provided a full week for Thanksgiving break and two days were taken away from the winter break to accommodate this. After we sent the survey out, Draft 1 was the preferred draft. This is the one that looks more like our current calendar. Common comments included that stakeholders valued the two weeks for winter break, families want to see more student days, stakeholders wish to see more days off split between Mondays and Fridays, and to pay more attention to non-Christian holidays for days off when we can. The calendar committee did consider all of these comments. This is our Draft 3 calendar, and this is the draft we are submitting to the board for consideration. When the committee came back together, we decided to move September 18th, which was a Professional Learning slash DPLC Day, to September 29th in order to avoid Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur in 2023. We grouped the January and March teacher collaborative time slash Professional Learning Time and teacher workdays together to have more five-day weeks and fewer shorter weeks. We removed the April DPLC slash P, Professional Learning Day in order to give back one day for student learning. This moves us to 176 instructional days for students on this draft, which is one more school day than the current school year and 1,056 instructional hours. We still have five days that will have Division, DPLC time for part of it, and Professional Learning for part of it, and we still have dedicated teacher workdays. Draft 3 is the version we are submitting to the board for consideration. What questions or comments do you have tonight? And we would like to bring it back for approval next time.
Are there any comments from the board?
Just that it looks like you took a lot of things into consideration and came up with a good calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Acuff.
With an idea to, if we have snow days and all, how many days of instruction, knowing that we're going to get to 180, 180? Do we currently have like 191, 11 days that are flexible?
So we have 66 hours over the required amount, which is 11 days?
I didn't hear you.
11 days.
11 days. Okay, good. Thank you.
Sanuthi, how do you feel?
Um, I, I think it looked good, like one day extra. I know usually students are like, "No, not an extra day of school." But at least for juniors and seniors, when we have to look at like colleges and stuff, an extra day is nice. And I also liked that you paid attention to more holidays when we, like, I think the calendar is nice. Thank you.
Anybody else? I would echo the comments of Ms. Dr. Acuff that you took it a lot into consideration. I know that the first proposal, I was worried about us having removed those instructional days and how do we get back instructional time? Because that's one of the few research-backed ways to improve student outcomes. I'd rather give teachers flexible leave days than takeaway days. And I feel like you did a good balance this go-around to try to balance all the time for professional learning while also adding back in a day, and I appreciate it.
Thanks.
And I know it was a lot of work.
Thank you.
I know that this was not part of the calendar, but if we do a summer school, when would that, what are the dates of that?
We haven't set those dates this year. Typically, summer school is four weeks in July. Sometimes the end of June, but usually four weeks in July. I see Ms. Collins nodding that I didn't mess that answer up too badly.
Okay, so that detail will be coming. Thank you.
So the next, next up will be 9.2. We are at our scheduled break time. Do you guys want to take a break and then lump our three things in? Or do you want to charge ahead? This is supposed to be 15 minutes. Ms. Karen Waters. Charge ahead, okay, you're, you're good.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Karen Waters, the Director of Community Education in the Department of Community Engagement, and I serve as Project Manager for the School Name Reviews. I had the pleasure of working with a diverse committee, Volunteer Advisory Committee, which was chaired by music teacher Cheryl Whitmore Simpson. The committee of 12 consisted of three ACPS staff, four parents of current Meriwether Lewis Elementary students, and five community members with no students at the school. They held two community meetings, edited and distributed two online surveys to the public, reviewed all public comments that were emailed to the School Name Review Committee email, and participated in foreclosed organizational meetings. As they were unable to come to an agreement on one name, per the policy, they recommended three names for consideration by the superintendent, which were determined by a secret ballot vote in which all of the committee members except one participated. And that one was not the one you heard from this evening. In order of the number of votes garnered, the three that they suggested were Ivy Elementary, Owensville Elementary, and Meriwether Lewis Elementary. Owensville Elementary, and Meriwether-Louis Elementary. Additionally, 321 students at the school participated in a voting exercise, with the majority of them voting for names other than Meriwether-Louis. Of those, 77 chose Ivy Elementary School. And as you all have seen in your final report, which I imagine you all received in your packet and have reviewed, the superintendent is suggesting that is recommending a name change to Ivy Elementary School. We determined by our research that Meriwether-Louis is not reflective of our system's values, which are family and community, wellness, excellence, and equity. And so subsequently, the superintendent recommended the change effective July 1, 2023. I just want to close out my remarks with a quote from Booker T. Washington, and I quote, "A lie doesn't become truth, wrong doesn't become right, and evil doesn't become good just because it's accepted by a majority." While we recognize that no one is perfect, we were not able to align the name Meriwether-Louis and square that with the values based on the information that was garnered from the committee's research as well as my own. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Waters, I do, I know that there are community surveys sent out. I'm wondering what kind of information or background information is included in that survey, because I think if you send out a survey without a lot of background information, people may have a different response than if they had more information. So I guess my question is how representative are the survey results, do you think?
Dr. Acuff, that is exactly one of my recommendations going forward.
Yeah, so.
Did you see that in the report? Is that we not include any biographical information at the beginning or on the surveys? The blurb that we had, it was just a, the, a typical blurb. I think it came off of one of the school's webpages. And it's what we have all been taught to believe about Meriwether-Louis, myself included. You know, he was a happy explorer and did great things and went off to discover the Pacific Ocean, when in fact, that expedition was not the first to reach the Pacific. So we did provide a really generic, I think it was four or five lines. He was born near Ivy, he was a, known for being an explorer, and it was not, it was pretty devoid of any detail. Bearing in mind that the surveys go out prior to the time in which committee members begin gathering research.
Right, and I would say that that survey methodology would skew it toward, people feel comfortable with the same, you know, this is where I went to school, and, and so I, I question the value of it as it's been done.
I would tend to agree with you. One of the things that we were very clear, though, with the committee on is that the survey was just an indicator of what public sentiment is based on the information the public adds, and we don't even know from whom that material is garnered. And so that that's only one part of their toolbox in terms of determining, making their determination. Similar to a jury process, you have some evidence, but then you add other things, and the picture sort of flushes itself out over time.
Right, just having that initial survey, I, I've heard from a couple of people saying, 86% or whatever, which does seem like an overwhelming number, but if it's not done in a way that is genuinely getting information, that it's, I think it just engenders some dis, disrespect or discomfort with the process, which I don't think is, is, should be there.
I think part of the problem is, I'm not sure that our, that we're clear on our renaming policy. My understanding was we preferred geographic locations, geographic concepts, or values, and having something named after a person is an exception. I mean, there would be the rare exception that something is named after a person. So I don't think our renaming policy emphasizes that enough, that we really do prefer it being named after a value or geographic feature. And I wonder if on our part, we can fix that in our policy so that people don't, who are on these committees, don't assume that keeping the same name is a default choice, because in reality, I don't think it is.
Good point.
And I would echo that. It's always hard, because I personally also am in favor of a characteristic or geographic location. So I bet's a well-stated. Can we fix this policy before the next six, last six schools get named, or are we just going to?
No, we can fix it. Yeah, and there were recommendations that came from the committee that are basically the same. The thing I would say, too, is that when we do that first survey, the community, the majority of the community, when we ask them, what should a school be named after, they say after a geographic location. But then they turn around and say, keep the name that we have. So I think they're on the same page with you, and I agree that while this, this process, I'm not sure we'll ever be at a point where people will be happy about their school's name being changed under any circumstances. We can keep working on the process and maybe get it right by the time we
Finish.
finish up.
Interestingly enough, this is my second one that I project finished, and on both of them, invariably, the committee, the community says, we want a place name or values, and then they default to a.
That's been the case every time.
Yep, it's just sort of habitual, like the human nature.
We've, we've already tweaked the policy twice. We can go back again, and anything we can do to help people feel like it's a trustworthy endeavor. And I certainly understand, Karen already did all my work for me, which is great. I do want to thank the committee members. There were, there was a, it was a committee that put a lot of time and effort into it, and, you know, I do want to be sure, you know, as we move forward, that we can do the best we can so that when it's all said and done, they feel like they were respected through the process. My experience, when I visited the committee with people that I talked to, was that they felt, felt respected, I thought, and that, and they, and also that they had learned something new when, when we presented to them. We did allow time for conversation. A few committee members chose to leave instead of sticking around to talk more, so the meeting got, kind of got cut short. So I thought spending some time to learn more about the namesake of the school was time well spent. And I really appreciate Karen for your work, and, and also Dr. Kaiser for supporting this work with us. It really means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. And I just want to say congratulations, Madam Chair. And I did a quick search, and I do believe you are indeed the first woman of color to sit in that seat.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Isn't it also your birthday? I, yes. Yes, it is my birthday. Thank you so much for that, Ms. Waters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May I just ask one question of the board? Do we have a consensus to change, make the change to the policy?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Yes, I would like to ask.
Do we need a, do we need a motion on that? I do not believe we need a motion for that.
I think we're good, and we'll, you know, as per procedure, we'll bring back a draft to you to take a look at before, you know, we go through the normal policy process.
Okay.
But Ross is listening and Patrick, so they'll, they'll get to work on it. We'll try to find a happy medium.
So now I open it up to the board. We have a break scheduled. It's 15 minutes. We have Mr.
We have a, was that Dr. Haas's official recommendation?
That is my recommendation.
Oh, sorry. It's my first time.
I'm so used to deferring to Ms. Waters in life that, no, I, I do recommend we, that Meriwether-Louis Elementary School's name be changed to Ivy Elementary School, beginning July 1, 2023.
Do we have a motion on that recommendation?
I move we accept Dr. Haas's recommendation about the naming of Meriwether-Louis, changing that name to Ivy.
Second. Do we have any discussion in addition to what we already discussed? Ms. Thompson, can we do a vote? Please.
Mr. Al Carroll?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved?
Thank you. So we have a break scheduled for 10 minutes. Would you guys like to take that? After that, we have two financial reports, which don't have a time given for them. Mr. Zimmerman, I don't know how much time you're thinking for those. They're short. So do we want to do the break, or do we want to push on?
Push on.
We need a break.
Break. We're going to do a break.
Okay.
It only takes one person. We're going to do a break.
Okay. It only takes one person.[657.04]